Planning Board meeting for February 4th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 8th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. For members of the public, you will have a chance to ask questions and comments on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, and you will need to provide your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Before we do that, can we swear in Mr. Dorado? He was not sworn in yet as a new member for this year.
Okay, please.
Okay, Mr. Dorado, if you could just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Paul Dorado.
I, Paul Dorado.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear... Wait a minute.
True, true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of Planning Board Class One Member.
Of the Office of Planning Board Class One Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Dorado.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Keith Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. DeCastro?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Here.
Mr. Seaman? I have not seen Mr. Seaman, and I don't see him in the audience. Ms. Casper? She just logged in, so give her a minute. Ms. Casper?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, can everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those serving both here and abroad?
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay, we have approval of minutes. A regular meeting, January 7th, 2021. Eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. DeCastro, Councilwoman Richmond, Ms. Casper, Mr. Cristiano, and myself. Do I have a motion for approval of minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
The motion was Mr. Leggio?
No, it was me, Mr. Voila.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Keith Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Leggio?
Yeah.
Mr. DeCastro? Sorry, Rob. Thank you. Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cristiano? Thank you. And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Do you have any correspondence?
I do have correspondence. I have an email from Mr. Ken Pape. He is the attorney for FP Howell, which is on tonight's agenda. He received a report from Ms. Beam, and he would like to have some time to review and respond to her comments and revise, submit revised plans. So he asked that this matter be adjourned from this evening, and he will be responsible for re-noticing and republishing once we set a new hearing date.
Okay.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, to, you know, anyone who may be here for that application, it's not going to be heard tonight, but everyone who received a notice in the mail will receive another notice in the mail. There'll be another notice in the newspaper, another notice on the website. So it's not being carried without further public notice. All those notices are going to go out again. And to anyone who's interested, all documents that we have thus far are available on the town's website.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The other thing, I sent out an email to the new board members for the board member training. This year, the class will not be given for experienced members. They're only giving the mandatory class, and it will be remote. And Ms. Casper, Mr. Cristiano, and Councilwoman Richmond have responded that they will attend. I guess I'm just waiting to hear from Mr. Bavai if he wants to go. I know you were trained once before, so I don't think you have to go, so.
Okay.
So that's it. For new members, you don't have to attend. And then I sent a lot of different emails in the past week with ordinances from the surrounding towns, and they're just for the board members' review and information. And that's it.
Eileen, is Mr. Seaman trying to get in? He just texted me. Uh... Hold on. Sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right. I don't see him on here either unless he's not in with his name. Let's see. Give me a minute. I would tell him to try to go out and come back in because he's not on my list.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it on correspondence.
Okay. Mr. Cattaro, I got a procedural-ish question for you for now and for the future.
Yes.
So on the agenda for the resolutions, items A through D, they're all eligible voters by the same people. Could I just make a motion for approval of the resolutions, items A through D?
I prefer that they be done one at a time. There's not real hard law on it, but we don't go wrong if we do it one at a time.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. Resolution for Planning Board Attorney eligible voters, Mr. Bavai, Mr. Husser, Keith Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. DeCastro, Deputy Mayor Richmond, Mr. Seaman... Did Mr. Seaman get on yet?
Hold on, he's right here.
Seaman unmuted himself?
And we're getting some feedback. Does anybody have more than one device active? Because if you do, that will create feedback.
Mr. Seaman, welcome. Okay, we are voting on resolution for Planning Board Attorney, and you were one on the list, and then it's myself. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Thank you, chief. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Keith Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
DeCastro?
I don't know where Ms. DeCastro is. It's hard to hear. Would you say Richard, me? Yeah? Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay, next resolution is for Planning Board Engineer eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Mr. Husser, Keith Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. DeCastro, Deputy Mayor Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and myself.
So moved.
One second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Brian, I can't hear a word anybody's saying. Somebody's got some bad feedback.
Somebody has something going on.
Yeah, you're really, really low, Eileen.
All right, hold on one minute. We're going to go one at a time. But somebody has something going on. Somebody's got kids talking in the background or something.
I've been very mindless now on Tuesday, so it's not me.
And I videotaped it, so I concur over there, Nick.
Again, it's... Somebody has their computer and their phone on. You need to shut one or the other off.
The ones that are...
I don't know, we're getting... Somebody.
I think, I think it's Paul Dorado.
Me? Let me see, my...
If everybody goes on mute, it'll put some of the quiet away. It'll make it quiet.
It is Paul because I just unmuted. I muted him, and it's gone. Okay. Can I do a roll call? I have Mr. Bavai and Mr. Leggio for the Engineers' Resolution.
Yes.
Brian, can I do a roll call?
Yes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Keith Kudrick?
Yes.
I got a thumbs up from the chief. Mr. Leggio?
Yeah.
Mr. DeCastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond? You're muted.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Ms. Richmond, am I getting it wrong? I thought you were our deputy mayor.
No. Not this year.
Oh.
Maybe next year.
I apologize. I'm sorry.
Okay. It's okay. I was flattered.
Mr. Russo, Mr. Russo is our deputy mayor.
Yes.
Okay. What can I tell you? It's a little bit of gray hair on top.
It's okay.
Okay. Planning Board Planner, we have a resolution eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Mr. Husser, Mr. Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. DeCastro, Mr. Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
That was Mr. Bavai and Mr. Seaman?
Correct.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Keith Kudrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Leggio?
Yeah.
Mr. DeCastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, we have a resolution for Planning Board Licensed Tree Expert eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. DeCastro, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and myself.
So moved.
I'm sorry, that was Nick, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Keith Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yeah.
Mr. DeCastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Thank you. Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next resolution is case number SP-1079. Eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. DeCastro, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, Ms. Casper, and myself. Roll call, I mean, do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Keith Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yeah.
Mr. DeCastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay, next resolution is for case number SP-1027A. Eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Mr. Husser, Mr. Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, Ms. Casper, Mr. Cristiano, and myself.
Mr. Cristiano is not eligible. That's my mistake. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yes. No, I'm sorry. He is deputy... Because Mr. DeCastro did not vote on that. He abstained.
He muted my name?
Okay. Roll call.
He refused, not abstained, I think.
Yes. Sorry. Do we have a motion?
Yep. So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Keith Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Okay. First submission waiver is case number SD-2993, McDermott &amp; Sons LLC.
That's going to be Mr. Farrell. He is now in the meeting.
Good evening. Ryan Farrell, applicant Wagner &amp; Wolf, on behalf of the applicant McDermott &amp; Sons.
Okay, Mr. Farrell, just the way we normally do it is the engineering report submitted by CME dated January 11th has the list of the submission waivers that you're requesting. Unless you're going to provide any of the information and we can take it off the list, our engineer Laura Newman will just go down the list and give her, her view on the merits, and you can respond to that, or you could just agree with it, however, however it goes. So Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony? You're about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a report dated January 11th, 2020. The submission waivers are specifically listed in item three. This is a major subdivision application. Although new roadways are proposed, there is development of the individual lots. Having gone through the waivers, I would request that the applicant provide checklist item 10, the Monmouth County Planning Board application, checklist item number 11, the Freehold Soil Conservation District application, checklist item 14, the natural resource inventory report, checklist item number 84, a landscaping plan, checklist item number 85, a woodland's management plan as trees are proposed to be removed, checklist item 60, drainage conveyances within 2,000 feet. Although the property or the project does not meet the definition of major development, it will contribute flow to East Fourth Street, and I want to make sure that the drainage system can handle that flow. And finally, checklist item number 75, the outbound survey of the property. The balance of the items, I take no exception to waiving for the purposes of deeming the application complete. However, items 10, 11, 14, 84, 85, 60, and 75, I recommend be provided.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Farrell?
Um, I have no specific... The only thing I would... I know the engineer had supplied some of the things, and I know that I think BB, item BB, has already been supplied. Is that what's my understanding? Maybe the board thinks different, but...
Well, we can... Well, I guess, one way or the other, if we have it, it'll come off the list. If we don't have it, and you do, you can supply it, and it won't be a problem.
I can check that prior to issuing our memo. We'll issue a formal memo, so if in fact the survey was provided, I will just take that off the items I requested. The other items, I have not seen. With that, I have nothing else. Thank you very much for your time.
So you have no objection to the checklist items that Ms. Newman is recommending?
I guess I just... If the engineer could state 10, 11, and 14. I wasn't aware that... I guess it didn't come to us that we would have to submit that. Could you just explain that?
It's on the checklist.
Well, I understand, and I'm looking at it, but I'm just saying the... Monmouth County Planning Board application, while you don't front on a county roadway, it is not our jurisdiction to waive that requirement. Freehold soils conservation district application, you have over 5,000 square feet of disturbance in totality with your property, and a natural resource inventory report is typically required on any major development and submitted in connection with an environmental impact report. As it relates to a landscaping plan, street trees are required in case you're taking down trees, which is the woodland's management plan. I think your engineer tried to say that it was under a single-family exemption. This is a major subdivision application, so it doesn't fall under that exemption. As a result, you have to do the replacement requirements, and again, at a minimum, street trees are required. As it relates to the drainage conveyances, as I noted in summary when I reported to the board, you will be conveying drainage to the existing system in East Fourth Street. And while I acknowledge it's not a major development, I'd like to move impacts to the downstream receiving waterway and drainage system and the outbound survey. As you indicated, if that's been submitted, I will take that off the list when I issue the completeness memo. Okay. Understood. Well, we will abide by whatever the board decides.
Hi, you two. The board typically takes the recommendations of our engineer. If that helps make your decision. So will you comply with, with the recommendations of our engineer? Provide the...
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the board have any other questions? All right. Mr. Farrell, does that complete your...
It does. Yes, thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else to discuss, I'll take a motion for approving the submission waiver with the items that Ms. Newman has indicated should be also provided.
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Keith Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yeah.
Mr. DeCastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell, have a nice day.
Thank you, you too. Thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night. All right, next case is number SD-2928F-A, Vander Veer Industrial Partners LLC.
We have attorney Carrie Higgins on the meeting?
Yes. I don't see me, but I can hear you. And also, I do have my engineer on if we need him, and you probably... Let me just tell you what he's signed in under, BB Wenson 622.
Okay.
Eileen, if you see that, thanks.
Thank you.
Carrie Higgins, McKenna Dupont Higgins &amp; Stone, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Higgins, I think you heard my, my opening for the last submission waiver. I know you've been here several times before. So Laura, if I could just swear you in again? You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Sorry, I was muted. I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a January 12th, 2020, 2021 report where the submission items are specifically listed in three. There are several waivers. However, the board may recall that this application was actually granted a final major subdivision approval back in 2013. The approval was never perfected and had expired, so a bulk of this information was all part of the original application package, and they're back seeking the final major subdivision approval. Essentially, these are not lots that are proposed for development. It's literally the creation of those lots along industrial way. So because of the... For those reasons, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming this application complete.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And just for the record, I believe we, we actually did complete an outbound survey, so we'll provide that.
All right.
And I believe I did receive that.
I think you did.
Ms. Higgins, any other comments? Ms. Newman didn't have any?
No. No, I do not. Thank you.
Does anybody from the board have any comments? Or questions?
Not right now.
Okay. All right. Ms. Higgins, will that complete your testimony?
That certainly will, thank you.
Okay. No one has any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve case number SD-2928F-A.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bivai, seconded.
Thank you.
Please, roll call.
Mr. Bivai?
Yes.
Mr. DeRado? You're muted, Paul.
Give a thumbs up.
Paul, you're muted.
He looks like he's working on it.
I would just come back to him, then.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
And Mr. DeRado? Can you just give us a thumbs up, Paul?
If you agree?
I don't know if he's even hearing us.
Can you hear us? Paul? Give us a thumbs up if you can hear us.
Sorry about that, major issues, yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, board.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Okay. Master Plan update?
I sent a, I sent an email to the council, you know, looking for funds for to study the caught me off guard, wasn't ready, the
Circulation plan and the traffic setting.
Yeah, circulation plan. So I guess I'm just waiting for them to discuss it and give us the green light. I mean, I think that's the best place for us to start. You know, how yeah, how do you zone? If we don't know the flow, and it hasn't been that in well over 10 years, so.
Councilwoman Richmond, any update?
Yes, yeah, sorry, Chairman. So at our last council meeting, I had brought up Paul's email. I asked our professionals to come up with a cost, and I spoke to our township manager today regarding that, and he's working on some information. He should have something to me tomorrow.
Okay.
And I can bring it to the council on Tuesday, and then we'll go from there.
So since this is a light meeting, I want to take a minute or two. Ms. Beam? If you could unmute yourself for a second, please?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Since we're probably going to be going into dealing with something in regards to the master plan, if everybody has read their planner, their New Jersey planner here, there's a bill that's made its way through the assembly. I'm not, is this, it's Assembly Bill Number 2785? Is this officially law yet, or is it just, it just passed the assembly?
Just the assembly.
Okay, so we don't have to be concerned with it yet?
Not yet. I mean, it could become legislation soon, but as of right now, it's just a bill pending.
So if we start, if we start a process of working on a master plan element, should we make an assumption that by the time we are ready to issue and adopt that element, that this bill may be law, and we may have to comply with it?
We should definitely. Go ahead.
I don't know that you can make those assumptions. You know, there are bills that hang around for years, you know, that never get, you know, that never go anywhere.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Brian, you're relating to this Stormwater Management Bill, I believe?
No, this one's super crazy. This has got all kinds of unfunded mandates in it, and my concern is it's going to drive the cost of doing any type of element. Every element that we've got to do, any element, doesn't matter which one we touch. We'd have to look at build-out analysis. We'd have to identify critical facilities, potential impact to natural hazards, provide strategies and design standards, include specific policy statements on how the intention of the climate, climate change-related hazard vulnerability assessment is done. I mean, there's a whole slew of stuff here that's just mind-boggling that it's being, being done this way. It's almost like it should be its own element.
Brian, I'm on the NJPO board, and the last meeting we had, we did not discuss it, but we did talk about stormwater management. So I would have to believe that it's not that far in with the Assembly and Senate and all that stuff, but
Okay, okay.
Nothing was discussed.
I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
Hey, on that note that Rob brought up, did Howell, you know, I saw that ordinance that wall asked, did Howell, is Howell putting anything together to update? They are. I received an email from the, from the engineer, and I actually spoke to him this morning, the township engineer. They're working on it. It needs to be done in March. We're not, we're not behind the bill yet. But I can tell you, I mean, it's not, really what it is, is you're putting an ordinance together that mirrors the regulations that the DEP is putting together largely, and it only really applies to non-residential development, because the RSIS is still going to regulate the residential stormwater management.
Thanks, Ron.
I don't have anything else to discuss. We have no reason to go to executive session.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.